Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 4:00 PM work session for Lynchburg City Council on today, May 26. So I will turn to, I believe, Ms. Witt for a report on the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security CARES Act of 2020. Ms. Witt.
This is really just a broad overview of what we're trying to do. So we were notified by the state that of the $3.1 billion that was received by the state, the city will get an allocation of $7,168,841. And we anticipate receiving these funds around the first week of June, so they're not here yet. We have very specific guidelines that we need to, for how we can spend these funds. So they are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to the Coronavirus Disease 2019 were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27, 2020, which is the date of the enactment of the CARES Act for the state or government. And they were incurred during the period that begins March 1, 2020, and ends December 30, 2020. So the funds have to be spent before December 30, 2020, and it's very specific that this is one-time funding. So we're not to spend these funds to replace revenues or on anything that is an ongoing operating expense. So the city manager has tasked the long-term recovery team, which is Emergency Support Function 14, to manage these requests. This long-term recovery team is the Commissioner of Revenue, the city assessor, the community development director, the economic development director, and myself. And then we've pulled in resources as needed. So, and what we're trying to do is we now, we put out a call to departments about how they could utilize these funds within the specific guidelines, and we're trying to divide them into three priorities: the public health and safety, continuity of operations, and small business assistance. So we're trying to categorize them because these are the three broad categories that are approved for the, for funding of the $7 million. So also, just recently, we proposed that the schools receive about $2 million of the city's funds. So within these guidelines, we would be able to share with city schools for one-time purposes. So the city manager, I'm sorry, the city school superintendent, Dr. Edwards, is here, and they have submitted a list to us for potential funding or potential uses of those funds. So, but again, we'll be looking at all of that. If that's council's wish, we'll be talking about that later in our balancing. But if that's council's wish to look at those, but again, we'll be scrutinizing these, making sure they fit within the guidelines, there's no recurring expenses, and that they can be spent before December 30, 2020. So again, I will be coming back to council on April 23. I have to do a public hear, I mean, I'm sorry, June 23. I need to do a public hearing, and these funds need to be appropriated. So at that meeting, I'll be able to give you a better understanding of how the city anticipates to spend these funds. So right now, we have a big compilation of requests that we're going through, so more to come. But good news, and we'll figure it out.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Witt? All right, Councilmember Perrow.
I'll just say the memo, I think this was made very detailed and thorough, and in addition to the schools memo that outlined where they chose to spend the money, where they're choosing to spend the money. So that was very helpful in assessing it, but I think we're going to have to hear, you know, really in more detail. If, you know, as you said, it's one-time money.
Right.
This is, this is a crutch, a temporary, a temporary bridge, and it's not new money, and we've got to be very diligent about not using, not committing to reoccurring revenues. Let me ask this: if, if there, I assume that this would, will all be audited during our annual financial audits. We'll go through, and I imagine the auditors will look at this money very closely.
Yeah, Brown Edwards is our auditors. They're already requesting information. I included with your agenda summary where the mayor, the city manager, and myself had to certify that we will receive these funds and that our intention is to use them only as they were given to us.
So what happens if we don't? Is there a clawback provision in the federal?
Yes, yes. If they're not spent according to the guidelines, the state can say you have to give them back. Or if they're not spent by December 30, there is a clawback.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's exactly what I was going to ask, because at this point, none of those funds, particularly for the schools, have been in anybody's budget.
Right.
By definition. And if the funds are allocated and expended, and then the subject of the expenditure turns out to be not qualifying, we don't have, and the school division does not have any money to reimburse the state. So is there going to be a rigid protocol before the expenditures are undertaken to ensure that nothing falls out and has to be refunded?
Absolutely.
Now, it does that, is that problematic to the school division, which has a very time-as-of-the-essence calendar to get ready for this fall and whatever logistics will be going on with regard to distance learning or a combination of brick and mortar and distance learning? It looks like a lot of things need to be ordered in advance. Is that going to be a problem to get that approval?
Yeah, so I believe the school superintendent did a really good job at connecting the things on the list to the eligibility criteria that was in the information that we received from the Secretary of Finance for the state. So we will be looking at everything very, very closely to make sure that everything is eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder, followed by Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Question: Does the state have like a preapproval process for the funds, just to make sure? I know we're given some certain guidelines, but we just follow the guidelines that they've given us?
No, we don't.
Okay.
They gave us these guidelines, and it's just, it's been really difficult. I have a Zoom call every Wednesday with most of the finance directors across the state, and we all have the same questions, and they've had a hard time finding someone to answer the questions. So we're all kind of feeling our way through this, but the general guidelines that are out there are very specific, but then there's those underlying questions. We're all just trying to make sure we get it right.
Again, I just want to thank you and your staff here at the city, as well as the school staff. I know it was a big crunch to get these in. The money, the funds came available kind of fast, and they'd be able to turn around and allocate the budgeting process kind of quick. I know it was a holiday weekend, so thanks were to the, for the school staff and the city staff for working to have all this together by today and continue on the standard process. I understand it's such a moving target, and we have Zoom meetings every Thursday with Department of Social Services. So I can only imagine what it's like for the city, all these Zoom meetings and all these conference calls and trying to figure everything out, and then it changes weekly. So I appreciate all the work that I've done to kind of get this together for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, kind of what as Councilmember Nelson was saying, that obviously if the money is spent inappropriately and there's a clawback when the money was spent, there's no money to get back to clawback because it was spent. And typically, when it's spent, it's gone. So hopefully, there's a, a very good judicious process that isn't just saying, hey, we got, you know, money to burn, kind of as we heard in the Finance Committee this morning, but something that actually is going to meet those requirements and not have any level of clawback. Because when you have a clawback, it not only hurts now, it hurts the future, and it hurts even worse because next year's budget, you got to come up with money that you had to clawback and pay back for something that was kind of one-time kind of thing. So I'm, and obviously, I'm sure there's accountability with that with regarding whether it be the school administration or whether it be the school board, you know, those kind of issues where, and just like we look to you, to making sure that some of these things are, are not spent on, on something that is going to cause trouble in the future. So thank you for looking at it very, I reckon, and it'd be better, I mean, of the two that you said, if it's spent inappropriately and it's clawed back, it'd be versus given back, that's much better. I mean, it's better not to even spend it than to spend it and then have to get it back out of something new for next year, or even this year, without having some malfeasance or misfeasance or whatever charge that would be associated with it.
We're being very, very careful
Good deal. Thank you very much.
In this long-term recovery team to make sure we get this right on the front end.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Perrow.
Somebody else, but just a question. As we look at this, though, we should probably consider this as a pot of its own money, not to be considered in terms of budget process for reoccurring, for any reoccurring dollars to the schools.
It cannot replace revenue.
Right. So we need to be thinking about this appropriation outside our budget balancing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The $2,583,000 and change from the CARES Act that was on attachment A from the last meeting, that does not have similar restrictions. That is, I understand that to be pretty open-ended and can basically replace revenues, right?
That's correct, and that's, that was what was for the schools.
Correct. Good. Just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, yeah, it's all different. And then also, in the council agenda summary, there was a list of, a summary of funding received that you'll see, all the money that we know about, including the $6.6 million from the Federal Aviation Administration for the airport that can replace lost revenues. The $420,000 from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, that's coming to council tonight with very specific guidelines on how that can be spent. The schools' money, the $7.6 million for GLTC, if your Finance Committee was advised of those funds today from the Federal Transit Administration, and those can also be used to replace lost revenues. $112,000 that's coming to council tonight from the Department of Justice and the Bureau of Justice Assistance. And there is a list that was provided to council for items for the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department for those. And then $116,700 that's also coming to council tonight from the Department of Health and Human Services for Fire and EMS, and that's for revenue replacement for ambulance fees. So there's, most of these have very specific things that they can pay for. And then, of course, the $7,168,000 that we just, for the city. So you've got the list there, that, everything that we know about at this point.
Madam Mayor, may I make one additional?
Yes.
I think the greatest challenge for staff, and I mean, it's literally raining federal money right now. But I've never seen anything like this. I don't think anybody in this room has seen anything quite like this. Yes, our strings attached, but I think that we need to be very mindful about how it's being spent in ways that are going to improve the city in its totality in the future, and then not get us to a point where we're relying on this time and time again.
We'll be there.
So I just, it's really, it's, it's really up to staff to try to figure out what is the best way to invest these dollars in the future of the city, and thank you for doing so.
All right, thank you. Any further thoughts on this topic? All right, we'll move on down now to the revenue collections received in several key city revenue sources, and Ms. Witt is up again.
So I promised I would come back and give you our March numbers, and then tell you what I know as of today about April. And I will say, and I put this in your council agenda summary, I have more information if we do this the first meeting of the month, the second Tuesday, as opposed to the fourth, because we don't get, like, April revenues weren't due for meals, lodging, amusement until May 20. And, of course, we had a weekend in there and a holiday, so I don't have a whole lot of information for you. And then the sales tax for April is not due until June 5. So it really makes more sense that I give these updates at the second Tuesday meeting as opposed to the fourth, because I'm a little premature on this one. But I do want to tell you what I know. And, you know, we, we were very conservative in making sure that we anticipated less revenues for this last quarter, from March through June. And so my, my hope, hope's not strategy, right, is that these funds will come in close to those revised revenues. So we are, yes, we are going to see a loss of revenues, but what I'm really hoping is that our projections were fairly accurate. And what we're seeing for March is, I didn't quite cut enough, but we have to remember that the meals, lodging, and amusement for March were not due. We extended that due date until May 20. So I have to remember, they're not really due yet. Well, they weren't due until May 20. So I think that impacted some, and then, it is what it is. So let's just walk through these. So for our real estate tax, the due date was May 15. The good news is, as of Friday's number, and we still have mail to process, because it comes in in trays, so it takes us a while to process that, but we're only $131,000 short from our revised budget. So to me, I'm grateful. So our net personal property, we've collected $13.6 million. This one is not due until June 5. So we still will get a whole lot of payments between now and June 5. So we still have $4.4 million to collect, but we're ahead of where we were at this point last year. So that's encouraging to me. Business license, we, we consider, we're ahead of where we were last year at this point in collections.
So in collection, you've collected more at this point, this year, than you did last year, and, but you assumed a reduction also.
Yes.
So we are basically on track to exceed your targeted amount if the trend holds.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm cautiously optimistic.
I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Those are my new words, cautiously optimistic.
So this is on personal property, right?
Yes, yes, and it's not due till June 5.
So with that, I mean, people bought new cars because the economy's going great and things, and then the tax isn't due until later, and then, so they buy a big car, a newer car or more expensive car with a higher tax, and then the tax is due after all this hits. So, so there is an increase because, you know, a good economy, but now the ability to pay it is tougher, but even with that tougher ability to pay, people have still paid that, is what you're saying? Okay.
Yep.
And, more conversely, they did not buy the new car. They hung on to what they had, the value came down a little bit, but they're paying their taxes just like they did last year. Basically, people are paying for their responsibilities.
Yes.
Which is great.
And so with that, is there going to be any, you know, everything is supply and demand and whatnot, and so when we have things, have we seen, I guess we don't look at that until later? Or when is the vehicle, that's January 1, right? Vehicle valuations are January 1, so it's not going to change mid-year based on the value, a lower value, right?
Right.
It's January 1, I think. Yeah, okay.
But so far, it's okay. Net business license, we reduced our projection to right at $8 million. To date, we've received 8.2. So we're a little bit ahead of where we thought we would end up for 2020, 2020, in our revised projection. So, and we also send out a delinquent notice June 1. We moved the due date for these to May 20, so we still have some money coming in, but we will do a delinquent notice, and we typically receive funds through the end of the fiscal year. So I anticipate this one's going to look better.
So just real quick here, so my screen looks different than your screen?
Yeah, we, I, yeah, you've got a one-page handout. I said I would come back today and update these numbers because it was so early. They, for this to go out Thursday, there was no way to put numbers in. So that's why it's different.
Got you. Thank you.
And then motor vehicle license, again, this was due June 5. So we've got still about a half a million dollars we need to collect between now and June 5, but that's very positive to me. So local sales tax, you can see the March number in here isn't quite what we anticipated. We expected right at $1.4 million, and we received 1.3, so we're short about $91,000. I spoke with the Commissioner of Revenue today, and we are cautiously optimistic for our April number to be higher than what we anticipated. So I will bring that back June 9 to you so that you have the final number, but first glance, it's looking like it's going to be just over $1.2 million. So cautiously optimistic. Meals tax for March, we missed our projection by about $205,000, but for April, what has come in as of Friday is $661,000, and we only anticipated $541,000. So, but we got to remember, March wasn't due, March and April were both due May 20. So we're still, of course, receiving payments for this that are, we're processing. So this number will get a little bit better.
And some of those could be like a lag, too, like, like we have delinquent collections, I think, that we go over in the Finance Committee, so those could be somewhat a little bit later.
Right.
Old payments that came in.
That's correct. Lodging tax, we anticipated $120,000 for March, and we received $171,000. So that was better than what we were thinking by about $50,000. And then April, we really thought there wouldn't be hardly anybody in our hotels, so we anticipated $11,000 in revenue, but to date, we've received almost $49,000. So again, more money will come in for April, but, so that's nice to see that, you know, we were a little more conservative. Amusement tax for March, we anticipated about $41,000. We only received $32,000, so we were down about $8,200. And then we didn't anticipate any for April, but so far, $1,321 has come in. But again, this wasn't due, March wasn't due until April, I mean, May 20. So some of that's probably related to March as well. So cautiously optimistic that we read our crystal ball well enough to, to be down about what we, we thought. So we're, we're in a good place compared to what we thought we would be. But again, you know, we're missing those revenues, but thankfully, we caught it and looked at it, and our projections are pretty close to where we thought we would be. But I will come back June 9 and let you know what our total April numbers were. Questions?
Any questions for Ms. Witt?
I mean, you all, you all really dug into this, dug into the numbers, gave your best, best guesstimate on it, with not a whole lot of information and a lot of speculation, but you gave it, you know, your best shot, and it looks like a pretty good one.
Applied math.
So thank you. Thank you for the efforts, and thank, thank you for your work, and thanks for, thanks for bringing us a number that we could sink our teeth in and then react to. I think it's very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Ms. Witt? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to follow up on that. I asked you at Finance this morning whether or not your proj, or the staff's projections of revenues was better than, about the same, or not as good as what you had projected two and a half months ago, and your answer was, things are a lot worse. That was this morning.
Well, for March.
For March.
I hadn't had time to look at April yet.
But based on what you've given to us here, it seems to be somewhat optimistic that things are better than you projected then, and the due dates for several large money items is still yet to be reached, so there's the potential for some very good news between now and then. And there is good news in some of the smaller categories where the returns are in. Is that, is that a fair statement to say?
Yes, yeah, because really, looking at March, I was really worried because sales tax and meals tax were so far below what we had projected. I was really worried what April was going to look like. So I didn't get my guesstimate from Mitch until after Finance Committee, and I hadn't dared to take a peek at my meals, lodging, and amusement yet for what had actually come in. So it was cautiously optimistic that we are kind of hitting the mark there.
And to a great degree, I will say again what I said or alluded to this morning. I think the credit for that goes to the ingenuity and creativity of our local retailers, eateries, and other businesses who saw the challenge and quickly adapted and provided systems and procedures and protocols where they could stay in business and serve the public and continue the revenue going, not at the level it had been before, but it was still, for the most part, still operating, and that's to their credit, and downtown Lynchburg and economic development for making that possible and keeping the spirit of commerce in Lynchburg positive.
I absolutely agree. I think the middle of March, a lot of businesses were caught off guard, but by the time they got to April, they started figuring it out. And so I think that's why our April numbers are a little bit better, and maybe our March wasn't, because it took them a couple of weeks to figure out how to work in a new environment.
Everybody just fell off the table in March and picked themselves up by April. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further thoughts? All right, thank you, Ms. Witt. Next, we're going to continue the discussion for the fiscal year 2021 schools funding, and Ms. Verchek.
Mayor, members of council, you have the latest list in front of you. I know it was also sent to you, but you should have a copy in front of you that might be easier to, to follow. A couple of changes since you last met on May 5, or May 12, May 12, sorry. So at the very, at the very top, line number three, we noted the loss of swimming pool fees for July and August due to the closure of the Miller Park Pool. That is $17,000. Below, in the Expenditures, Revenues, and Transfers section, there is a expenditure reduction for the pool during that same timeframe of about $46,000. And then we also had an increase in banking service fees that we had not captured, and that increase is about $67,000. So while we ended on May 12 with a balanced budget, with further discussion to come on schools, we now have a shortfall of $38,207, so we're going to need to resolve that. On the second page, we included the $193,936, which was the balance when we finished on May 12. So as much as I don't want to suggest this, I think I don't have another choice unless you guys do, that we adjust the $38,000 shortfall with the $193,000 to, to bring us back to a balanced budget before we start talking about schools again. We know we're going to need to find more money for those nine firefighters as soon as we can find the money for those nine firefighters. So I would ask the council balance that first, and certainly happy to entertain any other suggestions you have on that before you get into discussing the schools' budget.
Councilmember Hegelsohn.
I guess, Madam Mayor, that is something that I probably don't think we probably should do. We should, because there are several other different items that were actually, maybe a split vote. I think the, the action that we took with regarding public safety and the Fire Department was actually, I believe, that was unanimous. So maybe if there's something that was maybe, you know, not unanimous for, that may be a better place to start, to get that extra, what'd you say, $38,000, maybe a better place to look than something that we unanimously said, we think this is pretty important. So just my suggestion.
Councilmember Wilder?
Well, just, we have to revisit it in October anyway, because we're still trying to get to the, to the, not the staff number of nine, so we're revisiting that in October as well as in January, is that correct? Once we get better numbers?
Yes, I believe you will be revisiting this budget multiple times during the next fiscal year.
I mean, I'm thinking as a balancing number to, to, we're committed as a group, we're committed to funding those positions. I think at this time, I think it's wise to go ahead and make that adjustment, and then just bring it back in October, once we have better numbers to review. But just let the fire chief and staff member know that we're committed to, to funding that position, but we just have to review once those numbers are more solid, so liquid, that we can make a better assessment in October, and then maybe even able to fund the rest of those positions. Can I, can I make the? Can I make that as a motion? Were you looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
Yes, can I make that a motion that we adjust that number? The balance is the $38,207 from the firefighters' reserve money that we had. And then revisit that in October to try to fund the whole portion that we were requesting was a non-medic units, I believe, and revisit that in October once we have a better assessment of all of our numbers.
Is there a second? No, second for discussion. Oh, okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this point, the motion and the discussion is focused on sort of playing with money that's not really here to speak of. We all know that that amount of money is not going to do anything to promote what we want to be done for the Fire Department. I am very hesitant to take one penny off of that if it sends a signal to our first responders that they get cut from the top first, even though at this point, it's purely theoretical. I could support this motion if we revisit it in June, when we're going to have some real numbers to look at where we are and not do it in October. Because at that point, based on what Ms. Witt just said, it may be that the information is very positive and we will recoup that amount and more so as to have a balanced budget. So at this point, for the purposes of having a balanced budget as we move forward to the schools, I'd be in favor if, as a friendly amendment, we look at in June, we look at the schools.
Yes, I would take as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's been accepted as a friendly amendment. Any further discussion? Councilmember Wright.
Then prohibit us from adopting, you know, from finalizing the budget tonight, then?
No. And really, what you're doing tonight is just balancing the budget. We will bring the first reading of the budget back to you on June 9th.
All right, so this does not, okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Higleston.
I guess this is, I won't be supporting this. You know, what we did is we did say, and we, that's why I thought we shouldn't, and I made this recommendation last meeting, that we shouldn't be treating our first responders last. Kind of whatever's left over will, kind of the extra goes in here. But it should have been a concerted effort that said, here is what we really care about. We care about public safety, and we're going to do that first. That's why I suggested we do it first and say what we need to do first, rather than saying, hey, if we have a little bit extra, we'll give you a tip. If we don't, we won't. So I think it sends a bad message. You know, what we have done is said last time, instead of having nine firefighter positions, you know, we all stood up and applauded and wept and cried when we saw the video of those ladies coming in to save those kids in the burning apartments. They went in there and we applauded them. We applauded them when they were going out around the city worried about how they're going to get sick. We applauded them when they, a couple of them got the virus and brought it back to their station. And then we had to quarantine the station and the people. And we're wondering, what do we do? Because you take 14 people out. Couple that with all these other things that we've done, that we're kind of sending a message that says, hey, we really appreciate first responders and we're going to treat and take care of you first, not last. So this right here is just kind of saying, well, there's a little bit less money than we anticipated, so we'll give you a little bit less. So I don't think that's a good message for us to send. I know you're not trying to do that, but I think that's the message that is clearly presented, and that's why I won't support this motion.
Councilmember Para.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am not inclined to support it either because I think it's premature. What's the point of balancing a budget to zero if we're just going to discuss a significant chunk of it later? I don't know where the revenue for that chunk is going to come. If we don't support what the manager has recommended, then we're going to need to find a bunch of money. And it seems to me that this item will just be revisited again in the near future, like, during this budget balancing process. So I don't want to mess with it. I think we need to hold off on doing this. I think we need to resolve the schools issue first, resolve that, and then proceed with the balance of the budget. Because, you know, what's $200,000 compared to 2. some million? So I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Wilder?
I just don't think it diminishes our support for the Fire Department. I think we're all committed to that. One thing we're committed to is reviewing, everything is moving so fast with all the numbers. And we have to revisit several items of this budget because the economy is so challenging at this moment. Again, rear of the statement, I don't think it's fair to say we're putting them last, their first responders. I don't think that's fair to say that. I think we have made a commitment that we're supporting. You know, the Police Department had several issues, several requests in here as well, and we did not fund those. So I don't think it's fair to say that we are putting the Fire Department last. We have put some funds in here for them, and we made a commitment as a group to revisit this budget as soon as we possibly can to fund those positions. That's a commitment. That's a commitment we're making to our Fire Department to say you are important to us. We have some funds. We want to make sure that these are, we are allocating a portion so far, but we're committing to look at this again. That's a powerful statement, that they are important to us and we're committed to funding those positions. We didn't say that to the Fire, to the Police Department, to the Police Chief, to those positions. We didn't say that to them. But I would love to, at some point, if we do get back to that, if we try to fund some of those requests that they had as well. There's several things we had to take out of this budget, several things, several things from Parks and Rec, several things from, everything is important to us, the raises. I feel horrible about the raise for all the persons and the staff members that come continuously in a pandemic to meet about budget, to go on these conference calls, to do all these Zoom meetings, to figure out how we're going to balance all of this, all the hardworking people that continue to do that. And then we got to say, we can't give you a raise. You know, we can't diminish them as well. So I think we continue to make a commitment to what we can do. I think it's an effort to, really remember to balance our current budget and as soon as possible, with all these moving numbers, then we can revisit this at the end of June and then see how we're coming and see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Councilmember Wright, sorry.
I agree with Councilmember Wilder. You know, all of our city colleagues are important, every single, every single one. So, sorry, Ms. Witt, in June, I understand the recommendation or the friendly amendment is to revisit these numbers in June once we have more information. Is that then to suggest that the city's sort of overall projections for what the deficit, the projected FY '21 deficit might change?
I don't think so. At the June 9th meeting, I'll be able to give you firm April numbers. I still don't know what May looks like. You know, there's discussions about whether the pandemic has a reoccurrence in the fall and we start this all over again. Again, I don't know what I don't know. So cautiously optimistic today. Got nothing to go on for the fall.
Thank you. I'm not entirely sure what I'm going to do.
Well, okay, I tell you, we have a motion on the floor with a friendly amendment that sets it back of us reviewing it in June. I have a question. Did we, did I see any numbers regarding those three reductions or moving of items?
Yes, ma'am, you did. We sent that to you in your packet. If council recalls, thank you, Mayor, for reminding me of that. If council recalls, on May 12th, the mayor asked us to look at other expenditures that are included in the budget. And she specifically asked, either from the day or afterwards of me, to put together cost savings for three different services. One was our tellers that service the windows out in the lobby. And Donna can go over more details on this. The cost of eliminating the, or closing the Templeton Senior Center and the costs associated with eliminating leaf pickup. And there are consequences, obviously, that come with all three of those. So Donna, if you could just fill in some of the blanks there.
For our teller windows, we are functioning with them closed now. We've added the drop box in front of City Hall. It's really inconvenient. We've had a number of calls, a number of people still trying to get in City Hall because they are requesting to make cash payments. A lot of our citizens, there is a portion of them that need to pay in cash. You know, they can go get a money order, but again, our tellers, they really are frontline customer service. And so that's really, that's really critical to our citizens, I think. The other thing I think you need to know is that's not all they do. Yes, they are waiting for people to come in and do that, but they also process a lot of the daily payments, especially at our bigger due dates. You know, we get trays of mail. They are helping process those payments. There's also city departments that receive money. Every dime that comes into the city, all 300 million of this budget goes through billings and collections. So it's not just people that want to walk in to make payment. They are there, they process, we get files for people that pay online, and they actually go through those to make sure we get a lot of people that don't get their account numbers right, so we have to reconcile that. The tellers do that work to make sure that we can post those payments to accounts. They just, they have a lot more work than just waiting on upfront payments. So it's, and I possibly could maybe do with, if we really close those windows, I can't, I couldn't do without all of them because we do have, we have to process those payments. So it would look very different. Right now, we don't have people trying to make as many water payments, and we're getting in those in the mail. But for Finance Committee, I think Tim Mitchell let you know that we got about 1,100 on our cutoff list at this point. So there's a lot, a lot of those people are the ones that come into City Hall to pay in cash. It's also critical that when we do disconnect water, that people are able to come in and get their water accounts paid up and their service established the same day. The tellers also make it possible to work with the DMV Select, that if they owe delinquent personal property taxes, they can come in, make those tax payments, and then go across the hall and do their DMV work. Makes it way more convenient. We collect a whole lot of money that way for delinquent taxes. So it's just, they do more than just take those walk-in payments.
But the cost savings would be?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If we did do something.
Right, I was about to say, what's the number?
Yes, our cost savings would be about $50,784.
So with those payments, like if somebody does have a delinquent water bill, like the 1,100, typically, those are, you have late payments, you have fees and whatnot, maybe not necessarily with utility, I realize. But when things are like that, it's kind of like a payoff for a bank loan. Today, it's one number, tomorrow, it's another number. So maybe there are some new numbers that they're given and they have to make sure one area it's taken care of so they can go to another area, just like a car, a DMV type thing. You know, I've known people have gone to one, then they had to go to another, and then pay the taxes in the third and get it all, you know. So they do need to be able to get in there, especially those that are vulnerable, that are being threatened with having their water cut off, so.
And the savings isn't as much because water resources through an indirect cost payment, they pay 58% of the teller's salaries as well through water resources because they are taking utility payments as well.
Okay.
And that was, is your assessment assuming a whole year as opposed to a week?
No, that's correct. That's a whole year.
That's a whole year. And that's, hopefully, that's going to be, you know, hopefully, this nonsense will be done in a couple of weeks. And so just, I don't mean to say nonsense, but, yeah, I did. But anyway, hopefully, we'll be back up and running again. And so that won't be an entire year worth of savings. It'd be a month or a couple of weeks, so.
But the projection is to?
For a whole year.
And the ask was to eliminate it for the whole year? Future year?
Yeah, and that was it. Because, but now we have a more thorough picture of what is actually done, and we didn't know that water resources covered 58% of that. So that's one thing. What about the Templeton Center?
Jenny is not here. She.
Did Jenny send us?
She's hiding somewhere.
Go ahead and go to Leaf, Jenny.
Okay, we can move to leaf collection. The Vice Mayor is saying she may have sent us something. I didn't remember.
She did. Find Gano.
Okay, Jenny?
So that's $187,000. Am I remembering correctly, the volunteer hours of programs, 304 programs or classes that, I just remember some of the numbers out of that, but it's in there.
Oh, I'm sorry. $46,385 for the Templeton Center.
Forty-six? Well, that's way off my 187.
Oh, no. You're right. I apologize.
And the majority of that is staff costs.
That's staff cost. $106,000?
Yeah, $106,224.
Okay. And we're already lessening the services at two centers, right? Correct?
Yes, we're delaying reopening.
Delaying reopening. Okay. Yes, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to point out, I did see a memo that extraordinarily identified a multitude, it was a multi-page memo, identifying all of the services that go to the citizens through the Templeton Center and establish relations with this community, which is valued at much higher than the staff cost to man that center. And I think it's an asset that we would probably be imprudently closing if we were to do that. I recommend that memo. I can't pull it up right now, but I saw it.
I know, I was trying to pull it up.
I saw it over the weekend.
It was included in your packet on Thursday.
Okay.
It is, I believe, a seven-page memo giving you a review of all of the programs offered in fiscal year 2019, as well as fiscal year 2019.
Page 13, I was actually on it. Dropbox, sorry.
Well, thank you. And I recognize, all of our programs are valuable. And I recognize it brings value everywhere. And I recognize we win awards, we have a lot of valuable programs, a lot of citizens that benefit. But again, sometimes we have to spread the pain. And that's all I'm saying. And, but I'm not, I'm not recommending. I just wanted the numbers to come back. And it's not easy for schools, it's not easy for centers and neighborhoods, and a lot of our functions bring value. But again, we're sitting quivering over 38,000, and I just, we just found 156, potentially. So that's all I'm saying. And then the leaf collection was the third number. Thank you.
Yes, as is in your packet, streets employees perform leaf collection. They are be got reimbursable. That's only about three months a year. So if we were to reduce that service, it's going to mean reducing employees, and that would reduce street maintenance, snow removal, and all the other services that we provide, as well as Mr. Mitchell gave me information that it's going to increase the cost potentially at the wastewater treatment plant due to the leaves going down into the unlets. So there could be seen increased costs there. So that's why we are not recommending reducing leaf collection. It's really only a savings of $73,000. So it's insignificant relative to the service.
These leaves, I've seen these down, these drop inlets that are loaded with leaves and it backs up and goes into somebody's house. I mean, that's, I mean, that isn't any, or it backs up on the road. I see it all the time over off of Wythe Street, you know, some of these, you can't get all the stuff down. And they, they get out there and they unclog them. But man, you clog those rascals up, and they get clogged up with leaves and debris and all that stuff that you guys sweep up. So, so thank you.
Yes.
Vice Maradona?
Is that not partly funded by the BDOT also? And so would that change if we?
Yes, 50% of leaf collection is funded by stormwater. 20% of it is funded by BDOT maintenance funding, and then 30%, is funded by the general fund.
So it's already a sub-portion of it funded by stormwater?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, and they can't increase their portion?
It's based on some actual, some actual figures that we run, so we try to keep it as accurate as we possibly can.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, do you have a point about the Templeton Center? I do remember I was running some numbers, and hopefully, I'll get this one right, but it was about $6.11 per visit, per person per visit. but it was about $6.11 per visit, per person, per visit to the Templeton Center. So that's the cost to the city for, for visiting there. And I just thought that was an interesting number, and when you talk about value to, to citizens, and what, what it's, what should the city be paying for? It's just, I'm, I'm not passing judgment one way or the other. I just think it's an interesting data point, $6.11 per visit, individual visitor.
So is that the approximate cost? I'm just, again, what's the cost per child for?
For a neighborhood center.
Right, for a neighborhood center. What's the cost per child? So, I mean, when you think of the value and what it brings per citizen, or per child, per family. So that's something, it's a good number, I, I get that.
But it doesn't mean anything on its own. But the question you just asked about the neighborhood centers and the cost per child, or what the attendance is at the other centers, I mean, that would be, a comparison would tell you all a lot more.
Right, and, and then another part of it, I mean, I'm not, again, I didn't want to pit demographics of departments against departments, or a certain demographic of our residents in our city, our older citizens against a child. I just look at adults have options. Adults have opportunities to find other activities, recreation, and programming sometimes. Children don't. And so when adults can drive there, or they are coming from other, maybe living, assisted living places that offer recreation, I'm just saying, you, you can't, children don't have that option sometimes. So I put in a little bit different value sometimes on that. Yes, sir, Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I, I think I do slightly take a different take because there are lots of options. I mean, you know, we have Councilmember Wilder right in front of us that has an option with Jubilee. I know another fellow over at, I guess it used to be called James Crossing Apartments, or whatever the name was, now it's James Crossing, BB Shavers. He's, he does an after-school program over there that I've been in attendance to. Lots of churches have lots of after-school care programs. Lots of areas that do lots of things for children. I mean, so there are lots of things, so it's not, it doesn't have to necessarily be strictly government-centric because there's lots of citizens that have lots of either nonprofits or volunteer groups that care about those children and love those children and want to help them. So it's not just government has the, the, the area on it, and I know you weren't saying that, but I just, I look, there's, it's not just a, hey, government does this and nobody else does. Lots of churches do, lots of volunteers do, so.
Okay. Councilmember Wright, or?
I just offer that as the son of, of a very competitive bridge player who visits the Templeton Senior Center regularly. I know that adds great value in her, in her life, not that that's dispositive, but offering that for what it's worth.
Thank you, and again, I'm just looking at things that we don't normally ask about, and, and times when we have to balance a budget, and no one brings up service cuts, program cuts, minimal, or as councilmembers, we're not thinking like that. I, I understand the windows, and because it's been justified that they do more than just take payments, I think we need to have all those discussions, is what I'm saying, so.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Wright.
I do applaud you for, for bringing those items up, and I think it warrants discussion and consideration. And of course, not all of us are going to agree with him, but, but it's good to ask the question. You, remember that role we've had when we, when we, you have threatened to, or suggested reducing the hours to the library. You know, that, we could look at museums also. I think there are a number of areas that we could look at, but I think you're just absolutely right, just asking the question. I know we've got a motion on the table that we have to resolve, but in, in looking at this and thinking about Councilmember Wright's emails talking about managed vacancies, made me think about managed vacancies in a, in a little bit different light. Mr. Verchek, we hadn't, we haven't done managed vacancies in some time now. I mean, years, we haven't used anything for balancing the budget for managed vacancies in years.
I believe we use managed vacancy to get us through the current fiscal year, but we have not used it for fiscal year 2021.
We, what we did is we had that kind of as potential out there. Things are worse than what we anticipated, that we would have to use those to make it.
So I wanted to think about how they work and how managed vacancies work. It's not, I think we're looking at, or we've been thinking about it in too much of a, of a micro scenario. It's not year over year. It's really the aggregate. Over the past five or six years, what's the average difference between salaries appropriated and salaries paid out? And that gives you an aggregate number that you could count on as reoccurring revenue. Whereas if you're looking at specific, as certain positions that aren't going to be filled, you cannot count that as recurring. That's a one-time, if you look at one year. But if you look at the aggregate over multiple years, and say, take 50% of that number just to throw out, then that is probably a realistic number that you could adjust to and budget for because it's got, it's, it's, it's got operational value. That's the way it's been, and that's just kind of how it works out. So I just think we need to, we need to be careful about how we talk about managed vacancies. But I think it is also, it's a real tool if we need it, and we need to understand what that aggregate number is, and not a, an immediate number.
You raise a great, you raise a great point, and I think it would be very easy to use managed vacancy to balance that $38,000 and not touch the fire, firefighter money at all.
All right, so that brings us to a new thought process right there. So we had a motion on the floor to adjust the firefighter budget. The city manager just now said we could possibly do that through managed vacancies for the 38,000. So would you be willing, Councilmember Wilder, to accept that and remove the motion?
Yes, so basically, do I have to just draw the motion totally? Or what do I do now? Say it again?
Right, it could be amended.
Okay, so I amend that we use, instead of taking that 38,000 from the front department, I amend that we use that, take the $38,000 from the possible vacancies, use that money, manage vacancies, and use that money to balance the budget.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion on that? Is there?
You have to accept.
Right, Councilmember Nelson.
Was the one who seconded it.
Well, no, you seconded.
No, I seconded it, but he amended the first.
I would agree to the additional amendment.
All right, thank you, and I seconded it, so there's no further discussion? Further discussion, Councilmember Wilder?
So this totally, I mean, it's a total different motion.
Right, it's a totally different motion, so the motion is?
Can you just amend a motion that's a totally different motion, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so. Right, it was just amended, amended to, the managed vacancies would cover the 38,000. That's the motion on the floor right now. Councilmember Perro?
Yes, ma'am, and I don't disagree with this concept, I just think we're still premature. It's the same argument that I had for the, for the, for the unamended, or the, the first amendment motion. I just think it's premature to do this. I think we could, we may need to look at a larger number, and what, what number the city is comfortable with in doing, and, and use that as the, as a budget balancer in a pinch. So I just think we're premature to do it now. So I'm, I'm just going to vote against this, and that's consistent with my position on the first amendment motion.
Okay, any further discussion or thought? Councilmember Hegelsohn?
Just a question. I, I can appreciate this, and the managed vacancy, a lot of these items that you put in the budget, Mr. Verchek, was, you know, a recommendation of where it could come from. Was that, is there a reason why that wasn't recommended and now it is? I guess I'm curious, was, is that not a good policy, or what, what was the, what's the change?
So, Councilmember Perro said we have not used managed vacancy to, as a balancing tool for many, many years. This, because we've let it fall to fund balance to pay for those one-time capital needs, and, you know, in the future. We did use 1.5, 1.5 million in the current fiscal year to help close our $5 million projected revenue gap due to COVID. We have not budgeted anything for managed vacancy in fiscal year 2021. So this really is a simple solution, I think, especially given the uncertainty of the future, thinking a little more positively. $38,000 in a $194 million budget really is, I think it's, I think this is an easy answer, but I would caution council to not go to managed vacancy for anything else.
Okay. All right, if no further discussion, I will please take a vote, starting with Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perro?
No.
Councilmember Hegelsohn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I wish we had thought about managed vacancy earlier and not had to go through that whole conversation. I apologize for that. So this brings us to item 32 on your list, the school's operating budget.
So this is a general managed vacancy? It's not saying, you know, I know with the one and a half million, or the, or for, for the current shortfall, that was an intentional non-rehiring other than public safety. Is this, this isn't a specific position?
This is just wherever we have vacancies.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not specific. It's general fund specific. So item number 32, the revised proposed budget for the school's operating contribution is $39.8 million. The schools requested $42 million. The schools revised their request to $41 million, a decrease of 1 million. The managers proposed with the $1.5 million reduction from the budget that I presented in March, was $40,528. And then we, I proposed taking an additional $700,000 because of the pandemic, which brings it to the $39,828,498. And that is where you are today, and we just need confirmation from council if that's where you want it to be, or we need some, some conclusion from council on schools' funding.
All right, I'll tell you what, Councilmember Wright, just, yeah, follow back, Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just a quick question for this, Ms. Witt, before I sort of dive in. So did I, did I hear you correctly that you'll be bringing back the, the 7.2 million in city relief funds, CARES funds, and like the, the, the recommended allocation of those funds at a later date?
June 23rd.
June 23rd, and that would include 28% recommended, though obviously council would have to approve for the schools, is that right?
Yep, council tells me to do that.
$2,700,000, okay. So I suppose, I, I just want to sort of outline quickly the, the facts here as, and you all can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I know that a lot of folks are watching, we've, I don't know about you all, but I've been receiving a lot of emails and calls from, from constituents, so I'll make sure we're all on the same page. So as the city manager stated, the schools initially requested level funding of 42 million, though the city manager originally proposed 40.5 million. The schools then revised a request of 41 million. Then the city manager had, has a revised proposal of 39.8 million. So a difference of initially 2.2 million, and now a difference of 1.2 million. All right, from what they, am I, their, their request is still 41 million.
They revised.
So it's still, there's still a $1.2 million delta, delta there. And there are, you know, there are a couple of unknowns that, that we're all having to deal with right now. We're having to deal with a fund balance that, and we don't know what that's going to be, either on the city side or the school's side. We have, for the schools especially, and this is, I know, a big concern, Q4 2019, sales tax and lottery revenue data, and then of course, 2020 is really, sorry, 2021 is really an unknown. And, and that's, of course, really important for the schools. That's where they derive a lot of the revenue, is not just from federal and state dollars and, and local dollars, but also a lot of the state dollars is dependent on sales, sales tax numbers and, and lottery numbers. And we also don't know, right, we projected what the city's deficit will be, which of course is what's driving this, this conversation, and driving the city manager's proposal. We just, we just don't know if it's going to be 6 million, 5 million, 8 million. We just, we really, at this stage, don't know. We're kind of groping in a dark tunnel, trying to figure out what the best, best outlet is. What we do know, though, is that the city can afford, at least according to this projection, $39.8 million. We also know that the schools have received, and Dr. Edwards can, and I was here, can correct me if I'm wrong, about $2.5 million in federal CARES relief funding that they can, that they can use, sort of at their discretion, according to federal guidelines. And we also have already heard that the city is willing to part with 2 million of the $7 million in stimulus funding that it has received towards the schools. So I think all told, that's an additional $4.5 million towards the school, though of course, you know, the, the unknowns here again are sales, tax numbers, and lottery. So we're still, we're still in a, in kind of a holding, a holding pattern, though in, of course, in the past two weeks, we learned more about what we could use the local, the city's stimulus funds for, including for the schools. And so I think before, so I'm going to, I just want to make a proposal to council, but before I do that, I just want to note that, you know, everybody is feeling the pain here, nobody is immune. I know that, you know, this, it is heartbreaking to, that the city staff will not be receiving the wage, general wage increase that was planned, or the salary adjustment. It's equally heartbreaking, I think, for, for the city's school staff members who just got back on a salary step, scale. I mean, this is, they waited, you know, a decade to see that, to see that start up again, and they fought really hard for it. And I, I, I know that a lot of us don't take that lightly, what, what city, schools, employees have been, have been holding out for, and what that means to them. And so I think it, you know, we don't, this is not something that we do in haste or do willingly, but rather that we have a hole that, that has to be plugged for now, understanding, of course, that circumstances might, might change. So I, I offer up this proposal to council, I guess, with the, with the recognition of the shared sacrifice of city schools and, you know, employees, faculty and staff, and of course, city employees too. So I would propose to council that we, we, we approve the 39.8 million in local funding, and then when it comes back to us in June, the $2 million from the city's stimulus money. Of course, then the schools would also be getting the $2.5 million in direct money from the federal government, which hopefully will be able to tide them over. I would then further propose that the fund balance, we don't know what it's going to be. I think the most recent projection, Ms. LaConne, I'm looking at you, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, was about 1.3 million, though we don't know exactly where that's going to end up, right? Right, so I would, I would suggest to council that we, that we make sure, that we set us, set that money aside, whatever it ends up being, and then come back and appropriate that money at a later date to the schools, similar to the proposal that Councilmember Nelson had two weeks ago, to set that money aside for the schools, should they need it. And then hopefully, council by consensus will agree to revisit LCS funding come October and consider revising the appropriation based on the city schools' reported needs by then. Now we can have a full conversation, but we're putting a marker in the sand that come October, we will revisit this discussion, and if we, if we have the funding available and the schools need it, adding that, 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 those, those funds in. And I've talked with Dr. Edwards, and Dr. Edwards, I want to put you on the spot. My understanding is that the schools are amenable to this, and I've talked to some school board members as well. But I'd like to suggest that to council, and I don't know if that needs a formal motion or not, but if so, then I'm happy to make it.
All right, think, are you making that in the form of a motion?
I will make that in form of a motion.
All right, is there a second?
This is the proposed operating budget of 39,828,498 that the manager's got in our budget, just to affirm that amount.
To affirm that amount, and then say we will set aside the, the fund balance to be used towards the schools, though appropriated once we know the final figure.
But that's going to be?
Next, yeah, that's a separate motion.
That, that's the next fiscal year, anyway.
I know, but I want to make sure.
But the intent is there.
The intent is there, I want to make sure that the commitment is, that the schools recognize that the commitment is there to help them out as best we can.
So as long as that's labeled the intent to revisit in October, or, or early.
Or sooner, as soon as we know the number from the schools.
All right, the motion has been made, and Councilmember Perro second. Any further discussion from either of you?
Any further discussion from either of you prior to opening it up to everyone else?
I, I'll just say that I think we could have done this last week, and I wonder if I'd have come back from, from, from the beach, but that's all right. I'm glad we've done now. This, this seemed to me the, the logical approach that council should take. And I think, as, as evidenced by my second, I think Mr. Wright made a good, good motion that supports the, with the manager, the diligent work that the manager and staff has done to try to figure out how to get this budget balanced, yet it keeps the door open so that the city can make changes as necessary to make sure that we have a continued, continued excellence in our public school system.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson, followed by Councilmember Hegelsson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think this is refreshing, inasmuch as it is the identical motion I made two weeks ago, with the exception that at that time, we did not have the CARES funding known to us. So that aspect of it is new, fortunately. But my motion two weeks ago was voted down, and the rationale was, we don't want to deny the school division any more than the three point, thirty-nine point eight-two, when we might have more. Let's postpone it, let's delay it until we find out really how much we do have. My response to that was, if we have more, we have other things to spend it on, such as the fire department. We know the school division may have more in its end-of-year fund balance, and whatever they have belongs to them, and they should use it to fill the gap, because we can't use it for anything else. But the net result of my motion and this motion are essentially the same. So I would ask, just for a discussion, why was it prudent to delay and wait two weeks ago, but now it's no longer? And that's just rhetorical question.
Councilmember Wright, I saw your hand.
Well, I'm sorry, is it rhetorical or?
Well, it's factual.
I'd be happy to reply, which is, which is an offer, at least from my point of view, that there, there did seem to be, and I get, I understand that people can disagree, an undue rush last, last meeting to make a decision on the schools, and I felt like we still didn't, there were too many variables. And granted, there are still many unknowns right now, but I felt like there were more unknowns at the time, and why not, why not avail ourselves of an additional two weeks where we can acquire more information, as we did, as we did here? And instead of pushing through something that I think would leave some folks sort of confused about our actions, I think that this gives us more time to consult, talk, and understand really what's in front of us. So I'm glad we, I'm glad we took the two weeks. I, I can say that for myself, of course. But I, I agree with you that the net, at the end of the day, is, is much the same, though the two million dollars in CARES funds are, are significant and a different twist on this proposal.
All right. Well, thank you for that rationale. I do have a question, and it relates not so much to your motion, but a statement that's on a memorandum that you passed around to us. Is that last sentence, excuse me, the next to last sentence in that memo part of the motion or not? Because I, I don't think that is what the school division is planning to do.
So I'm, I'm, forgive me.
I thought this motion, just to be clear, was the thirty-nine million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, because it's not, and then the other element could be discussed later. So it's just the one budget item, since this is a budget time right now, correct? This, this relates to raises.
Correct. So I'm not making that as necessarily as part of the motion, given that we cannot stipulate how the school board, you know, determines how to spend their appropriation. However, I have understanding from the parties all involved that know, you know, the, I know that there's a sticking point, which is, you can't have, for example, school employees receiving a wage increase during fiscal year twenty-one, when city staff members have, have, won't be, won't be getting a raise. I think that's, I think it's fair then that, that nobody receive a raise unless everybody can receive a raise across both, both entities.
And that's my question, because I did have the opportunity to watch a school board meeting, and my understanding was that there would be, half the staff would be receiving a raise next year, and then the rest would be receiving a raise the following year. So it's a compromised step, and I don't know if that's.
Well, happily, we have, we have some of the experts in the room. Dr. Edwards, you, would you be able to, I guess, share with us what the?
What you heard about half? So in the discussion about half the teachers getting a raise one year and then the other half getting a raise another year is based on the steps on the salary pay schedule. So that discussion was just explaining that next year, all the teachers weren't scheduled to get an increase the way the pay tables were. Now, it was the board's wish to really try to do the best that they could to give the staff a step increase, the same way that it's your wish to give your staff an, an increase as well. But the discussion, there was no finality on that discussion that said that teachers, half of the teachers were absolutely getting a raise next year. It was if we were to go with our pay schedules, that's what that would be.
So does the, if this amount were funded to the schools, would that allow for the one half of the teachers to get that step increase?
Now, if you recall, our forty-one million dollar request, when we reduced it by one million dollars, we were already, we had already removed the step increase to get down to the one million dollar reduction with the hope, just like the city, that if revenues were better in October, that we could go back and revisit that, because just like the city, we are predicting what our loss in sales tax and loss in, lottery funds might be.
So the actual amount, whatever amount you get raised is not in the works budget?
It was not in our option B, and I believe that was a question that council had asked, whether or not the raises were included in the city's, in the schools' option B, which is the forty-one million dollar revenue request we adopted, and they were not.
And the, the sticking point was, one question asked, is there a step raise included?
There's no salary increase or step raise.
Yeah. And the other question was, is there any raise included? And the answer, and then the conversation at the school board meeting talked about having a fifty percent teacher step increase in one year, and then the others in the following.
Correct. If we were to follow our pay schedules, if none of this happened and COVID didn't affect us and we followed our pay schedules, the teachers would get a, a step increase, or half of the teachers would get a step increase this current coming school year, and the other half would get it the next school year. And in addition, the original governor's budget also had a two percent raise. So those are the two sets of funding that you're talking about. The first two percent raise was taken off the table when the governor removes, removed the compensation package. Then we reduced our request to you by one million dollars, we took the step increase off the table. And it's just the teachers that alternate, half the teachers one year, half the teachers the next. The rest of the staff are on one year, off the next, on and off. So it is a rotating pattern.
Well, there's no question in my, in my mind that the teachers deserve a raise. A lot of people deserve a raise. My focus was, is there in fact raises in the future of the budget that's going to be adopted based on this amount of funding from city council?
Right now, based on the thirty-nine million, the raises are not there. However, I'm going to take that point that says, if when we review the revenue in October, and let's say that we didn't have as big of a hit, and it's not six billion dollars on the, six billion, I don't know why I wanted to say six billion, six million dollars on the city side, and it's not what we're projecting, about twenty percent decrease on the school side in terms of sales tax and revenue, we agreed, as you all did, to revisit that to see if we could put the steps back in, not necessarily the two percent salary. But that's not based on the current budget, that would be based on if the revenues are better.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hegelsson?
Were you done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't, no questions.
Okay, thank you.
And I do appreciate Councilmember Nelson's comments, and this is exactly, I think, the motion that we looked at last week when that was all the money, or two weeks ago when that was all the money that was left. And, you know, I, I recognize sometimes politics gets charged with words and emotions run and, you know, but when you call something, you know, reckless and almost diabolical in one week, and then it's fine the next, I recognize people have different learning curves. Sometimes it takes a little longer to get there. Sometimes you haven't done that and didn't have the experience of, of the budgets and, you know, but I, I just, I'm, I'm glad that we're now actually coming back full circle to where we were. And Councilmember Perrow, I appreciate you cutting your vacation short to come back, because we need the tax dollars in Virginia more than in some of these other places. But, so, so with this budget, or with this motion, the, the thirty-nine million, let's just keep in mind, I do hope, and, and those are my concerns too, as Councilmember Nelson alluded to. You know, when I watch meetings where they're saying we need to give folks raises, I was really concerned about, and, and I think we all need to be empathetic, for the folks that aren't getting any pay, let alone folks who haven't missed a paycheck. And pushing for raises at this time isn't the best thing for us to say. We have eleven hundred people right now, or actually not people, households, eleven hundred households, which probably is a lot of people, that are right now getting, ready to get their water cut off, because they haven't paid a, you know, probably a small bill, but fortunately, the city took some action and said, we can't shut off the water of these folks. Let's think of something to make a little bit of a change. So this is eleven hundred households that are, are fear of getting their water cut off. And when you hear that coupled with conversation that says, we not only want all the money we can get, but we want to give raises to folks, I appreciate the compassion and pushing for that, but we've got a balance between the payers and, and the services and those receiving and those that are paying. And, and so this, I think we come kind of full circle, and we come back to a reasonable approach. And Dr. Edwards and the school board, I'm, I'm sure that you'll all be looking at recognizing, as we've talked about for years, consolidation with the declining enrollments. I'm sure you'll be looking at, you know, the numbers that we saw with regarding SOQ funding, that is so heavily weighted, extra that our local taxpayers are having to pay for, for administrative type personnel. I know you're, you're trying and doing your best, I appreciate that. You know, these numbers here and this budget year, it was coupled with the state giving more. Sometimes we just segregate and say, well, what's the city giving? Well, that is good, but the, the, the concept of the school's budget is how much is the local taxpayers are giving? How much are the federal taxpayers giving? How much is the state taxpayer giving based on how many students? And so with those numbers, I believe the state, and I think Ms. Lukandich clarified that a couple of weeks ago, that the state was giving an extra two and a half million. And so when the state gives more, that takes a little pressure off of our local taxpayers. That's why we have the required local match. That's where we have the, those incentive funds. And so with that being the case, when times are, are tough on the city and the city taxpayers and the city budget, when times are more, that we're coming in with the state, that's the time to take that pressure off our local taxpayers, not just saying, hey, we got this money last year, so let's keep it the same. You know, the stimulus money or this CARES Act money, which I think it can be helpful. But we've just got to be very careful that we don't take, as Councilmember Perrow said, I think earlier, in a different setting, we take this one-time money and get hooked on it. You know, you take one-time money and, and, you know, sometimes it, not having that money, it can actually be better than having it, because you, you kind of figure out what you can do without, and you kind of regroup and you rebalance, all of which is saying, hey, we want to make sure our students are educated, we want to make sure that they're getting the best environment and learning environment possible. So, so this motion is referring to specifically in the budget item of the twenty, of the thirty-nine million, I think that the city manager has put in that, and then will, at a future point, we will then have a separate motion, whether it be tonight or later in the future, to bring up any others. But the, the one-time money with the fund balance, we really got to be careful to make sure one-time fund balance money isn't just utilized for operations. So I'm glad we're separating, separating those motions, and this motion I will vote in approval of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from any council members? I will say, just for me, I mean, I was somewhat in agreement with Councilmember Nelson's motion the last time. Time makes a difference. And on the day we were here last, for me, the city manager had just received the information regarding the seven point two million, I believe at about eleven o'clock, eleven a.m. on the twelfth, so just a few hours prior to our meeting. So to me, the delay was learning more of what the funds could be used for. And so I'm appreciative that they did ask the schools, and the schools came back with more detailed clarification of what they possibly could use it for. So I agree that I, I appreciate it, having time there to learn a little bit more. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was no, there was no urgency last time to push that decision through. It didn't have to happen last time, that was just something that, that a couple folks wanted to do. It didn't have to happen, it wasn't going to make a practical difference in the production of this budget. And so I would sort of push back on that, and I would, you know, suggest, Councilmember Hegelsson, I just don't want you to think that those remarks went, you know, unnoticed. They didn't, and, and I, I'm dismayed.
What, what are you referring to?
Huh? Somebody, it takes some of us time to catch up?
No, I'm just.
Some of us don't know how to budget?
Well, no, no, I'm just.
Councilmember Hegelsson, please.
I'm not trying, but when you call a motion, you know, on one side of, of an argument is if a, something of debate worthy of debate is then just deemed reckless, because it can be thrown out there and castigated in a bad light.
That's not impugning anybody.
That's not, that's not a good way to do things. So that, that was my point. I mean, and, and I, I don't appreciate that. I didn't jump up in arms when you called Councilmember Nelson's motion, which I voted for reckless, or the city manager's budget number that you called reckless.
I didn't call it reckless.
But you had somebody else, well, I mean, so anyway, just, that, that was my only thing, and I, I'm sorry that you took it the wrong way, and I shouldn't have dispunged your, your budget prowess, so.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
I personally was pleased to have the extra time, because we certainly got information from Dr. Edwards and city manager that, that gave us a, a more detailed look at what we were talking about. I, and I, I appreciate that. I think, thank you, Dr. Edwards, for all the work that you did and put together so we had a greater understanding of what we were voting on. And I hope that we can sort of get some decorum up here so that we quit insulting each other. Maybe that would be a good thing to thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? And is everyone understanding the motion before us? Thank you of the thirty-nine point eight appropriation. Thank you. All right. I will start with Councilmember Wright for the vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelsson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Aye.
And I will be voting aye. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Now, would a motion be entertained for the intention of the fund balance now at this point? Councilmember Nelson?
Madam Mayor, I would so move that our intention, as I stated last time, is very clearly and specifically to allocate whatever fund balance is generated by the Lynchburg City Schools to be applied for, first, to fill whatever gap they may have in their budget, and then if that gap is filled, then we will address any other priorities, whether they be capital or otherwise, one-time items.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you. The motion's been made in second. Would either of you have further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All right. Any further discussion on that motion? Councilmember Hegelsson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On this one, I will not be voting in favor of, because this item is one-time money. So it's the leftover surplus in one-time money, you know, kind of keeping somebody at bay and saying, hey, maybe we'll get some, maybe you won't. You know, I've heard the school reports over years that said, we have roofs that need to be fixed, we have bathrooms that need to be cleaned, we have gyms that need to be built. You know, so with that, to just say, we can take these funds that are one-time money and somehow put them into an operating budget that is annual, I don't think that's a good pattern, nor is it our normal procedures, nor is it good budgeting protocol. We have, you know, over the years, there
We have, you know, over the years, there's been a fairly sizable, I believe, fund balance in the school division. At some points, it was $5 billion, which is great that they didn't spend it all, which is wonderful. So if we now just say, whether it be 1.3 million or whatever that number is, saying that you can put it in the operating, I think that's kind of giving a false assumption because if we're saying, "Here's the dollar amount," they kind of make decisions based on the actual known budget. I mean, you hire people. You don't hire them in October or whenever. You hire them in the summer to have contracts for the teachers, and you figure out classroom sizes, and you figure out if you need to consolidate or not. But putting out there a carrot that says, "We're going to possibly give you extra," that is one-time money for an ongoing budget, I don't know if that's the best protocol.
Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with the majority of the comments that Mr. Helgelson makes. However, I see this as an extraordinary circumstance. I agree that this is not a matter of operating principle or sound finance, but I agree with Mr. Nelson's position that this is an extraordinary time, and some, this is a one-off, basically, or the intent is it would be a one-off and not a reoccurring thing. So I'm inclined to support it for that. However, I've got a suggestion for council, also in the awkward position, I'm kind of binding, I guess we cannot bind a future council. This is just kind of a, this is, this motion's a nicety, I guess. It doesn't, it's not a binding motion, but it certainly does show the intent of council. The binding motion will happen when it's actually made, and I just hit my lever, my seat sunk, when it's actually made in the upcoming fiscal year. I would make a recommendation, though, to council that you really craft this resolution carefully and in conjunction with the auditors. Because if it could be stated in such a way that due to the coronavirus pandemic, that this, that dollars intended to go to roofs and those one-time expenses had to be suddenly appropriated to cover schools and salaries, and that's a, that is a damage caused by the coronavirus, would that pass the litmus test to use some of the one-time $2 million to pay for a couple of roofs that this money would normally have been paid for? So just a thought, and that's something that you'll have to work with the accountants on, but if you get the language in the resolution correct, maybe it could introduce some fungibility into that, into those dollars soon.
All right. Any further, Councilmember Wilder, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I do support the motion. Again, I want to commend our superintendent and the school board and all of our teachers and custodian workers and all of our workers for cafeteria experts for the school system, for the work they do. It's important to give them some flex, some support in that fund balance, because we don't know what, when our kids come back, we don't know what's going to happen, what kind of class size, eating in the classrooms, not in cafeteria. We don't know, we don't know the unknown. So I continue to pray for our school system, our superintendent, all the board members. I continue to pray for you and for guidance and leading us through this pandemic and the situation we're in. So I support the motion. I support the work that you're doing and want to continue to pray for you as we guide through this unknown area.
Thank you. Is there any further thoughts? I also want to echo that, and thank you for just sitting through these weeks with us. And also in the memo that the superintendent provided to us, it, she mentions, first line, "Return to Learn Guidance from the CDC, Virginia Department of Health, and Virginia Department of Education." So I thank you for all of the meetings that you've attended and continually sit through because if the public has read the guidelines, as I have read, that is very difficult, in my opinion, for children. And so to prepare a learning space where they once were free to be on the playground and free to be in cafeterias and walk the halls and not in a military-style format, now it is just a little bit different. And so I thank you for the leadership you're providing and working with the state and our regional other superintendents on this, because it is not just a regular budget year on how to get back to learning. So the return to learn is something we're all going to have to invest in for our families, our children, and our city. So I just wanted to say those words to you, so thank you all. And I will now call for a vote. Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Helgelson?
No.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will say aye to that as well. The motion passes. Thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember Nelson?
Before we leave, issues concerning the school, I had a couple of thoughts I wanted to share, and maybe this is not the most appropriate time, but I've learned over the last several weeks that a number of notable Lynchburg City School personnel have left or will be leaving, and I wanted to give a shout out to them. Dr. Willis Vanderworker retired earlier this year. I had known Dr. Vanderworker in the J&amp;D Courts as much as, as many as four decades ago when he would work with the children and the cases that I handled down there. And he had extraordinary skills that he not only brought to those families that were in the judicial system, but to the judges of those courts and certainly through the years to the Lynchburg City Schools. Dixie Sears was a Lynchburg City School Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction in five different areas, and I worked with her likewise in similar circumstances, and she was a remarkable person and a very talented leader in the Lynchburg City Schools. She retired, I understand, a couple of weeks ago. Marie G. was a teacher, I think, for 17 years in an elementary school, and then became the Director of Technology and Instruction Supervisor for 14 years. And then for the balance of her 38 years, she was the Director of Personnel and Federal Programs in the Lynchburg City Schools. And it was, she was an energetic, capable person. I enjoyed working with her in the relations that I had with the school division and my clients. And I think it was very fortuitous that Lynchburg City Schools had a personnel, human resources director who knew the education field so well from top to bottom. And then lastly, Dr. Ben Copeland, I understood, retired last Friday, and he served since 2012 under three different superintendents. We certainly know him, knew him as he appeared before us on a regular basis, explaining and clarifying and answering questions on technical, financial, and programmatic issues that we had with regard to what the school was doing. He had a very broad grasp of technical information. Not only did we have the pleasure of having him work on the Heritage High School Task Force, he closely supervised the construction, worked with the city on the construction of that high school. And I personally have had the pleasure of working with him on the Future of Education Task Force over the past year. He was a member, he was a member until he left on that task force. I understand he's now the Vice President of Finance and Administration at Piedmont Community College in Charlottesville. And Lynchburg City School Division's loss is certainly Piedmont's gain. All of these are very capable and remarkable persons, and I do wish them well. I mention that now because no doubt, they had a plethora of experience and talent. And certainly, whenever you replace someone who has great experience, there's an opportunity, as Councilmember Helgelson often points out, to have vacancy management and some gains. So that, their loss is an opportunity for the school division to recoup some budget savings there by virtue of the replacement of these very valuable people. So that's, I guess that's the silver lining to that cloud. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Helgelson?
I can add on to that, Councilmember Nelson, one very extremely important person that you know probably very well decided is also retiring this year. And so one that has led Perrymont Elementary School from pretty low scores to extremely high scores in a matter of a period of a couple of years. So that is yet another person that I guess, I think you say that, but we'll say that publicly. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. You're very much appreciated.
All right, thank you.
Of course, for the record, you're talking about Mrs. Karen Nelson, wife of Councilmember Randolph, Randy Nelson, and former, soon-to-be former principal of Perrymont Schools. Yes, congratulations to her and to all those that you mentioned. Randy, thanks.
All right, thank you. So that motion has passed, and school discussions has ended. There are no further thoughts. And we will now receive an update on city actions regarding COVID-19. Dr. Wodoka?
Yes, ma'am. Just two quick updates on, or updates on two of the ESF, so we have actions on. So ESF 5 is our Emergency Management ESF. This group is working, and you'll hear a little bit more about this tonight, about the COVID-19 care kits that will be using funds from CDBG hopefully to provide these care kits for citizens of Lynchburg. Additionally, we have an opportunity to partner with the Department of Health to hold a community testing event, so there will be additional testing, COVID-19 testing opportunities. More details to that will be available soon. That's very early as we go now. The other item is ESF 14, which is our Long-Term Recovery and Mitigation Group. This group has developed and continued to develop some best practices for some of our businesses that are reopening and trying to give good guidance on how to do so safely and responsibly as we move forward. Additionally, we will be preparing recommendations, this group will be preparing recommendations for the CARES Act allocation, the balance of what's available there, and managing those requests for the city manager. So those are the two big items and two major changes in the last two weeks. I would also point out the email that I sent, I guess Friday, talking about the unemployment numbers in the city. Unfortunately, we still see new, a fairly elevated amount of new claims for unemployment, but we certainly are headed in the right direction. But again, one is too many, so that's where we are right now. Would take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Wright? All right. I know that we had discussed earlier, and I'll just bring it up for the public record, the trash. And so that's just something we are looking at. I want people to know that. Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Next, we have roll call, and I will start with Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. No items, Madam Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Wilder?
Just again, I want to thank the school administrative staff, as well as Bonnie's staff and Ms. Witt and all those, during this challenging time period and all of us working together. I'm thankful to the leadership we have in our city with the schools and the city side and the years and years of service that you have put in and your dedicated service, and the thing that you take this to heart about feeding kids and about balancing the budgets and things of that nature. And sometimes you've taken, I don't want to discredit, but you have, you put your all into this, and I'm going to let you know from my point of view as a citizen, I'm a taxpayer, I want to say thank you for all the hard work, for all the care you do, for all the abuse you take from all over the city, from this and that. You don't do this fast enough. You don't do this good enough. You're not feeding this. Our lunches were late. You know, all those things, people don't see all the behind stuff that you got to deal with during a pandemic, but still try to balance the budget. I just want to say thank you. My heart goes out to you. I continue to, again, pray for you. This is such a challenging time for everyone, and no one should be abused or thrown, with stones being thrown at you. This is a time that we all need to pray together and work together. And I just want to say from my heart, I appreciate you, and I appreciate the work. I mean, just tirelessly getting these numbers at the last minute and trying to do them and trying to make it all work for all of us in the city of Lynchburg. So I'm glad I live in Lynchburg. I'm glad that we have such an awesome team here working for the citizens of Lynchburg, and I just appreciate your work, and I continue to pray for you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to just acknowledge the Registrar's Office and their team for conducting a safe election, city council election this past Tuesday, and offer congratulations to my colleagues on their reelections, and then looking forward to welcoming the new member come July. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
Well, I was going to say something very similar. I was just going to congratulate Vice Mayor Dolan, and congratulations, Mr. Helgelson, and Mr. Wilder, as well as Councilmember-elect Farady. And I wish all of you the best over the next four years, and it's certainly going to be an exciting one, and I hope, and I'm not going to contribute to that excitement, but I wish all of you the best in the next four years.
Thank you. Councilmember Helgelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got three things. One, I brought up at, as roll call at Finance Committee, and so I'll just kind of say it kind of quickly. You know, with the coronavirus thing and all the shutdown, there is so much trash piled up on the streets. And so with that, there's lots of people that are putting junk out, and whether it be bulk, whether it be whatever, lots of time, so lots of time to fix up stuff. And our public work staff has been running, because there's three knuckle booms, and so they're utilizing those very efficiently. Sometimes they're spreading the staff out where they're operating on Sunday and picking up stuff because you've got one knuckle boom. They're trying to do a lot because it's record amount of trash that I've ever seen. And then the sad thing is, we've coupled that with the scale that is broken at the landfill. So I recommended, or talked about that at Finance Committee today, if there's something that we can do to really address that, whether it be waiving the 500 pounds and letting people bring stuff in, because they're bringing it in, and that saves a whole lot of time from staff, because rather than making it dirty on the streets, if they can bring it in and dump it off, because that line can get a little tedious. When you have to wait in line coming in, and then you circle back and wait in line again, sometimes people may say, "You know, maybe we ought not to do that." So also, if there's ability to have a short-term contractor, you know, some kind of bid that says, "Hey, let's pick up this stuff because it's overwhelming," and it's never been like that before, so that. Secondly, yesterday was Memorial Day, and fabulous being down at Monument Terrace, recognizing our war, the folks that have died in service to their country. The Monument, it'd be nice if we could get that rascal cleaned up a little bit. As I looked around there, there's a lot of mildew and stuff. It may just be a little pressure washing and stuff and, you know, shining the brass up nice. The third item is, I recognize with our meetings and that City Hall is closed at times, but like today at Finance Committee, I didn't realize that that is a public meeting, but the doors were locked outside. And so with FOIA, with those kind of things, we've, public meetings, we've got to figure out what we can do to make sure those doors are not locked to let people in. So hopefully that's, I know we didn't have finance the last couple of times because we didn't have anything, so, yeah, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
Well, I just want to thank Lynchburg City School leadership. I think we're very fortunate to have a strong team, and I really appreciate it. I believe that the public education is the backbone of our community, if not our democracy. Thank you very much. And I also want to thank Bonnie and her team and the staff for getting us through this budget, and I know that we kept looking for places where we could find more resources, and they just weren't there. But thank you very much for all that you did to lead us through this. And I want to thank my colleagues for not killing each other through the process.
Thank you. And I have a few mayor announcements. Congratulations again to our councilmembers, reelect Vice Mayor Dolan, Councilmember Wilder, Councilmember Helgelson, and Councilmember-elect Chris Faraldi. Next is discussion regarding the date for the organizational meeting for July. It can be the first Tuesday in July, the second, or another day that week, or the first regular meeting in July, which is the 9th. So is there any thoughts on the organizational meeting? Would you like to wait until the 9th, or would you like to?
Let's wait until the 9th. I didn't see it on the agenda.
Okay, yeah. And so just bringing that up, all right? Is that a consensus, everyone, the 9th of July?
Thursday, is that right?
The, no, the 9th would be the, our regular meeting day of the 2nd, the 9th of...
That's in June.
Oh, forgive me, sorry.
Right.
That's in June to decide when we're going to...
Right. Okay. And thanks to everyone for compliance with the COVID-19 directives regarding the Phase 1 reopening, everyone in the community. And we know there was another announcement made today, so we'll just have an additional support of what we need to do as a community to help protect each other and ourselves. So thank you for the practice of self-responsibility. All right, thank you, and we are recessed until 7:30. Thank you, and we are recessed until 7:30.